Hello everyone and welcome to this very crucial engagement. What a moment in the political history of this great nation. It is 103 days, 13 hours to the opening of the 2023 presidential election here in Nigeria. Seventy-one percent of the 12 million new voter card registrations for the coming polls are young people between the ages of 18 and 35. And more than ever, the conversation is rife across platforms. And there is no better time to keep the tempo of engagement on the now. The People's Town Hall is a brainchild of China's television and its partners to have the people ask the right questions and engage candidates seeking political office. The objective basically is simple: sustain our shared democracy. And not only speak about those ideas and manifestos, but ask the questions and get the solutions. Take the candidates up and specific direct solutions are also being expected to be put bare to the very many challenges confronting this nation. Over 200 million people's lives in this nation. Over 200 million people's lives and livelihood are involved here. And about 90 million voters will be deciding the future president of this nation. That's in February 2023. So China's television and its partners have thought it well to put this together to get the Nigerian people themselves in the driver's seat. It is supported by the UK Foreign Commonwealth and Development Office through the Nigerian Civil Society Situation Room and other partners like IAGA, Pearl and Action Aid. Thank you so much, our partners, for this very crucial engagement that you have put yourself into. It means a lot to the people of Nigeria and they will realize it in the next few minutes when we begin. This is the first in the series and we are beginning the engagement with the New Nigerians People's Party. And you can follow and send your own questions to the following handles which will be showing on your screen now. The hashtag is pretty simple: ThePeople'sTownHall. Let's get straight to the business, everyone. I would like to bring on the stage, first and foremost, the vice presidential candidate of the NNPP. He's a vibrant Pentecostal pastor who has taken the audacious move about some people who say he's a risk of going into politics. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome on the stage Bishop Isaac Idahosa. He is the vice presidential candidate of the New Nigerians People's Party. I will also be welcoming the presidential candidate of the party. He's a former governor, a former civil servant for 17 years and has retired as principal and water engineer in Kano State. Of course, he's a former National Constitution Conference member from 1994 to 1995, a former two times governor of Kano State. That's Bishop Idahosa. Thank you so much for coming. He's a former minister of defence and special envoy to Dafur and Somalia 2003-2007, a former representative of North West on the board of the Niger Delta Development Commission, former presidential aspirant under the APC in 2015, and a former senator of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, former presidential aspirant under the PDP, and the now national leader and presidential candidate of the New Nigerians People's Party, Senator Rabiu Musa Konkoso. Thank you so much indeed. Please have your seat, gentlemen. I appreciate it. Now that the candidates have taken their seats and taken on to the very hot seats. Well, hot in the sense that there will be hot questions from Nigerians. They will be the one asking the question. Well, let's begin, of course, by hearing from the candidate. But let me tell you that you can be part of the conversation. Just go straight to your social media handles. Of course, you see some of the handles right there on the screen. Hashtag People's Town Hall. Throw in those questions on Facebook, Twitter, on YouTube and of course on our Instagram pages. Hashtag People's Town Hall. And that's how you can follow the conversation. But I must also ask the very wonderful audience here in the room. I'd like you to put your hands together for yourself because you are participating in what has become a very great moment in the history of Nigeria's politics. Let's get started, everyone. First, let's listen to the opening statements from the flag bearers of the NNPP. Let's begin with the presidential candidate of the NNPP. I would like to invite Senator Rabiu Musa Konkoso. Your opening statement.
Thank you very much, Sehun. Your Excellency is distinguished legislative handleman. My name is Mohamed Rabiu Musa Konkoso, the presidential candidate of our party, the New Nigeria People's Party, the ANIAN PP. Just before I came, I believe Sehun read part of my citation. But I think it is always very relevant to say that I'm one of the lucky Nigerians who had a lot of opportunities in the past and of course a lot of opportunities now and by the grace of God in the future. I started my primary school in my hometown Konkoso. And in those days, we had boarding primary schools and children were examined and best were taken to those boarding primary schools. I was lucky to be one of them and I attended Guerzo Boarding Primary School. From there, I attended technical school or craft school then in Wudil and Technical School Kano. And thereafter, I went to Polytechnic, Caduna Polytechnic for my OND and of course HMD where I graduated with upper credit. From there, after service, NYSE in 1980-81, I proceeded to the United Kingdom where I attended various courses in civil engineering specializing in water resources, where I attended Middlesex Polytechnic, Lufbra University of Technology, Nottingham University and many other various courses in the United Kingdom. When I finished my technical school, I was very lucky to get an appointment with Reka as an artisan. And of course, I was in the service when I had all the opportunities to go and study various courses in my field. By 1991, I left the service and joined politics. And I was very lucky, of course, based on the hard work and commitment to win my election in my double local government. And same '92 was sworn in and became the deputy speaker of the House of Representatives. We were kicked out by the military. And then I contested election 1994-95 to come for Consumer Conference here in Abuja where we had the opportunity to draft the 1999 constitution. Thereafter, we formed so many associations and so on. And at the end of the day, we started PDM together with our leader, Sehun Musa Radu, our blessed memory. It was not registered and therefore I became the leader of the DPN in Kano. And then the party was not very popular with the government. As a leader, we worked so hard. All the elections that we had in Kano, we were the leading party. And thereafter, when Rabatya died, we came up with the five parties and I joined PDP. In fact, I was one of the founding father of the party at this level and in Kano. In 1998 and by '99, I became the governor of Kano State. And as God will have it, I lost election in 2003. And I'm so happy to say that I was the first and only person, I believe, in this country to lose election. And I not only make phone call, but I physically, together with my deputy governor then now the governor of Kano and other commissioners, to congratulate the owner, I mean the winner.
You'd like to round up your opening statements and why you need to be elected?
Well, you didn't tell me how much time I have.
You actually have too many.
So we can go on and on. I'm happy now I am the presidential candidate of our party, the NNPP and of course, the national leader of the party. I'm happy to say all the leaders, the national chairman, the deputy national chairman, the secretary and all other leaders of our party, or many of, most of them are here, the legal advisor, the publicity secretary and so on, they are all here, my spokesmen who are here. And thank you very much for inviting us to be here with you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Now, it's a time to listen to the vice presidential candidate of the NNPP. Why should Nigerians vote for your party? Your opening statement. You have too many.
Too many. I'm Isaac Idahosa, Presiding Bishop Godfirst Ministry. Born in the early 60s in Niger State. To be precise, Quantogora, my primary tertiary education in Niger State and as a true Caduna Polytechnic, following the father of my principal. Received a divine call and then manifested it in '89. Till date, that's 33 years pastoring a vast congregation. That is in a nutshell, born into the family of six, the third born. Why would Nigerians vote for NNPP? We are here to have a rebirth for a new Nigeria. We are here to bring about fresh air. We're here to bring about hope for the hopeless. We're here to have our economy rejigged, corruption prevented and of course again, to be fought. We are here to build on infrastructures, human capital development. We are here to look into the women and child care that our healthcare systems will be looked into. We're here to look at security. We're here to look at the things that affect the common man. We're here to look at how Nigerians' glory will be recovered and restored. We're here to look at how we unite the nation that had been so much divisive. We're here to look at how our children can go to school without the parents thinking on how and what shall they do to fund their education, which of course my principal will be talking about. And so Nigeria has a lot. Our manifesto should tell you should be the richest of all. And if you want to prove me right, just get one of the manifestos and have a critical study of that. You will see that we are coming to curb the excesses in governance. We are coming to do a whole lot. Well, I don't want to unleash everything. In a nutshell, if you vote for NNPP, you can be guaranteed for a glorious, better, hopeful future. Thank you so much.
After those opening statements, let's get straight into the heart of the matter. The section 14 of the Nigerian constitution has clearly stated the burden of protecting the lives and property of our great nation and that is security, which is a primary responsibility of government. So anyone who is planning to be Nigeria's president must be able to take up that responsibility. And that's the reason why we begin tonight with security as a major conversation that we'll be starting with. And tonight, we'll begin with the question from experts in the room. First and foremost, we begin with the question from Mr. Mike Ageofor, who is a former director at the DSS and a security consultant. Mr. Mike Ageofor.
Good evening, Your Excellency. Good evening, everybody present. Your Excellency, you know that most of the problems confronting this country are motivated by ethnicity, religion, politics and so on. In the north, you have a separatist agitation. You have a Boko Haram, religious extremist. In the east, you have IPOP asking for Republic of Biafra. In the south-south, you also have agitation for resource control and disruption of activities. In the southwest, people are asking for restructuring and all these issues. How do we intend to confront these challenges? To strike a balance? Meeting the aspirations and yearnings of such people? At the same time, solving the problem? That's the first question.
Let me allow. Would you like to take the question?
Thank you very much. Let me say that going by my experience over the years as a politician and somebody who had opportunities to be the Minister of Defence of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, somebody who had opportunity to be in the NDDC and somebody who had an opportunity to be the governor of Kano State for eight years. Four years from 1999, 2003 and four years from 2011, 2015. And of course, somebody who had opportunity to be an advisor to presidents on Dafur and Somalia during those crises. I believe that I am the best person to handle the issue that, or issues that you raised. Because most of the things that you mentioned were things that were able to came across in the past and those were the issues that were able to sort out. You see, the issue of politics is key. That is the beginning. If you get your politics right, many things can fall in place. And of course, to get the politics right, you need to have the required experience, the required capacity, required integrity and commitment to the sorting out of the problems themselves. So first and foremost, there must be dialogue and is there very clearly in a blueprint. Our plan, our pledge was that we will try to carry everybody along. We will really happy to work with everybody. We will give everybody equal opportunity to make contributions toward the development of this country. And with that, I believe that the issue of intelligence can be easily generated from the general public once they have confidence in the government itself. And most of these agitations you mentioned were based on the fact that many people are of the opinion that they are either sidelined or not being carried along. We will build confidence in all Nigerians individually and collectively to believe that we are there for their interest and overall interest of this country. A politician at this level must understand that servicing ethnicity or servicing just one religion doesn't work or servicing even region or zone doesn't work. What will work for all of us is to build the confidence of people individually and of course, across the country. And by doing that, you will have peace and stability and therefore development in the country. Now, the key thing that has been raised by Sehun is the issue of the security. And most of these failures, issues that we have are branches of the issue of insecurity. If you don't have security in your country or in your community, hardly can you get anybody who can go to the farm. And that's the situation now in many parts of this country. If you don't have security, you hardly get anybody who will buy or sell something at point A or point B. And so many things will affect the security itself and so on and so forth.
And... So because I'd like you to take, in this segment, which is security, a few more people are going to ask question. So if we get it right, you said you are going to dialogue. You dialogue with IPOP, are you dialoguing with Boko Haram? Is that the center point of the question Mr. Ageofor is asking?
Yes, we'll carry everybody, we'll listen. But don't forget, on the other hand, we have in our blueprint that the military in this country are very much inadequate. Now, we want to raise the level of just less than 250,000 to about 1 million. So also the police, less than 230,000 to another 1 million. And people in your own area, the DSS, of course, will increase the number and civil defence and so on to match the exigencies of this moment. Of course, issue of training, retraining, issue not only of the intelligence from the people, even the artificial intelligence that is very strong now due to the level of the technology that we have across the world. And of course, we will have everybody working together to ensure peace and stability. So on one hand, yes, we'll dialogue with anybody. But throughout the history of not only Nigeria, the world over, there will always be few people who will not be happy with peace. And that's where government will take necessary action to ensure that there is peace in each and every square meter in this country.
As much as I would like you to treat those, these questions very decisively or also I'd like to, that you treat them straight on so that we can... One more question from you, Mr. Ageofor.
Your Excellency, from your approaches, you are looking at kinetic and non-kinetic approaches. Can you explain briefly to Nigerians how you intend to achieve these kinetic and non-kinetic approaches?
Please.
He's talking about kinetic and kinetic approaches. You've talked about that.
You talked about it, about using political solutions and military.
Yes.
That's kinetic and non-kinetic. So what I'm saying, explain to us briefly how you intend to achieve this.
No, I think it's very clear. Of course, I told you we'll carry everybody along. Now I can give you a practical example that most people today are not being carried along by the government. Even at our level, if we see something, we need to say something. But we find it difficult to know who to talk to because many doors are closed. And therefore, people, especially the military itself and other security agencies, are missing critical issues or points or information that ordinarily would have been very important to them to ensure that there is peace in the country. So we'll take everybody along. And of course, the military or the security agencies plus the intelligence I mentioned, both the artificial and of course, the human that is very much available today. Because I believe, based on my personal experiences over the years, that Nigerians are good people. They are ready, they are willing to support government to ensure that it functions well, even under the most difficult circumstances, even under provocations and so on. But unless they are given the opportunity to do so, it becomes very, very difficult to pass any information which is critically needed by our security agents to function.
Thank you so much. Let's take a question from Mr. Kabiru Adam. Thank you so much, Mr. Ageofor. Let's switch over now to Mr. Kabiru Adam, who is also our security consultant and is the executive director of Beacon Consulting. Mr. Kabiru Adam.
Thank you very much. The presidential and vice presidential candidate of the NNPP, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. Your Excellency, I have three questions and I'll quickly read through them. It's been argued that two of the major reasons for insecurity in Nigeria are absence of coordination and synergy between the federal and sub-national governments and within the about 27 ministries, departments and agencies. How do you plan to address this issue in a practical and sustainable manner that ensures effectiveness and efficiency? Second question, there is a lack of accountability within the security sector where officials whose negligence or other acts of omission or commission are not penalized. You were once a minister of defence. What did you do as minister of defence to address this challenge? And what would you do if you become, if you are elected the president?
Let's allow you to take these two questions.
No, the third one.
No, let's take the two questions first because of time.
Okay.
Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Yes, we are very much aware of the issues of the synergy and the issue of coordination. Synergy, there must be synergy to succeed. And that was exactly what we did when I was in the Ministry of Defence. We noted that there are many issues even between the services, three services that we had and even the ministry itself, the civilian side. And of course, even worst, the other security agencies, especially like the police. In most cases, there was no understanding and agreements between them. So also in between the ministry and of course, including the services and other institutions like the Office of the Security Advisor and many other areas that were very critical in terms of synergy. Now, what we did in Kano is a practical example in the sense that we brought everybody together under the Brigadier Commander in Kano. And I believe it's still the practice now. The police, the air force, the SSS, the civil defence and everybody, they are working as a team. When we were challenged, when we had the issue of Boko Haram at Itispeke. And therefore, we came together, worked together as a family. Nobody was in a hurry to tell Abuja that I have succeeded in one area. Because as a chief security officer, I told them clearly that our overall interest, I mean, success is the success we require. Not the success of the CP, nor the success of the Brigadier Commander alone and so on and so forth. So we worked as a team and we provided all what it takes, including the technology, including the welfare. In fact, we were feeding the military and all those who are on the streets at that time in Kano. Because in fact, the feeding, the food comes out of the government house. I personally go there from time to time to test it, to make sure that it is good, to ensure that it is healthy and therefore is distributed. And we took a lot of steps to ensure that whatever welfare is going to the soldiers or the streets or the police and so on were given to them and so on. So we created a very conducive atmosphere for the security to function in Kano. And they are motivated and they worked so hard to the extent that at that particular time, there was nothing Boko Haram did not do to make Kano its base. We had to kick them out. And I don't think there is any other person who means bad for the state who is happy to go to Kano even at this moment. So and of course, there is the issue of coordination, which I think they go together with the synergy. Now, the issue of accountability, it is very critical. Now, the issue of accountability, it is very critical. Of course, in the security field, it goes up to a certain point. It's not 100%, but it has to be close to that. Of course, there is the issue of penalty. Now, nobody in a country like Nigeria or any country for that matter should be over and above the law. One of the issues that we are having in our opinion today in Nigeria is that everything goes. Nobody is punished. 100 people killed, 50 people killed, one person killed. That's the story. A place was broken, so many people escaped. Doesn't matter and so on and so forth. So there must be the issue of penalties. There must be an issue of reward. If you do the right thing, you give the necessary reward. If you are wrong, you are wrong. So these are some of the things that they are already in a manifesto or blueprint.
As a commander in chief, if for example, the kind of prison break that we saw, what would you have done?
Well, you see, in the first place, it must be prevented, even from the officials, official officials who are here. There were so many missing links. We were told that many of them, according to the information, that people who have been seen around for a long time. And that's what even happened during Boko Haram. Many of those things started from our own end in Kano. And before you know it, we pass out the information and so on. Every time, for many obvious reasons, people are finding it difficult to take the action at the right time. That timing is very critical. And that's what happened in that case. Now, what would have what would have done was to prevent it, to make sure that it didn't happen. Now, of course, you have to make provision for any security breach to happen for hours in any part of Abuja. This Abuja is most unfortunate. I will tell you that our reaction in Kano at that particular time was not more than 10 minutes within the metropolitan. We provided all the vehicles, we provided all the communications necessary to function effectively, we gave them all what they required. And they were placed, they were staged at critical positions in Kano. And when you call maximum at that time, I don't know, maybe it's the same now, 10 minutes, somebody will be there. And up till now, I can tell you from time to time, I test the telephone. We have a situation room in Kano. There was never, even now, if I give you the number, you call them, it won't go off. 1, 2, 3, 4, maximum, somebody will pick in Kano. And if you tell them, the local governments, in the city and so on and so forth, they are there. So the act time to react is very critical. So for them to operate for many hours and then put their people, drive the vehicle, run away to a known place, it's a miracle. Somebody under normal circumstance would have accounted for what happened.
Let's take a break. I must sincerely thank you, Mr. Kabiru Adam. You've provoked a very critical answer from Mr. Ijofo. Thank you so much indeed for those insights. Mr. Undu Owokolo, yet another security expert is standing by to ask his question. But we will take a break. And when we come back, there are more critical aspects of security in this country that any chief executive to lead this country must be able to take on. We'll be hearing from Senator Kwan Kunsou and his running mate on their solutions to security. Stay with me. Economy also will take our attention after this break, everyone. Welcome back to the People's Town Hall, the first in the series of the presidential town hall engagements with some of the frontline presidential candidates and their running mates in the race for the top seat in Nigeria. Thank you so much, everyone, for joining. Don't forget that you can be part of the conversation. If you are not part of this audience in this room, or if you're not part of the audience on Zoom, because we have lots of people also on Zoom who have joined us, you can be part by sending your questions and your comments on social media, hashtag People's Town Hall. Let's get back to the questioning. I have Mr. Undu Owokolo is a security consultant and the chief executive officer of the next year company. Thank you so much, Mr. Owokolo. What are the questions bothering your mind on the issue of security?
Thank you, Your Excellency, and thank you again for offering Nigerians opportunity to listen to you. So I'm going to be very direct. My questions are going to be too, but I'll be a bit particular. I'm going to take two conflicts and two regions so that you can give us direct and pointy answer. First, I'm going to look at Banditry and I'm going to do the Fama header conflict. And my questions will go, if you watch between 30th of October and 5th of November, between these two regions, there were about 24 incidences pertaining to Banditry, of which about 60 people were killed and about about 250 people were equally kidnapped. And to most of us who understand the security issue, we think that the Nigerians state has mismanaged the entire situation. If we become the head of state, what would we be doing differently to make sure that the not central part of the country and the not west part of the country is secured? That is my first question.
Would you like him to answer to that? I don't want him to make something.
Okay.
Do you want to answer that?
I can answer. You see, the issue of security, it's not just a matter of police, SSS, guns and so on. You see, for you to have effective security in any country, you have to ensure the security of food, you have to ensure the security of health, education, infrastructure, all sorts of things, even job opportunities. Now, once you do that, you find so many instances and of course, grudges will go down. And of course, dialogue is very key. Government must be talking to its people. President must come out regularly, in my opinion, if he can, every week. Talk to the people, tell him where we came from, where we are and what we intend to do. And people will be happy, even to see their president. President and other key government officials are key that people of that country, even those friendly countries, will be happy to ensure that things are going well. So there are many aspects of security that are key, that must be handled very efficiently for you to have a very happy community, very happy country. Now, in the absence of that, of course, many things will happen. And that's when you can have all these things. Most of the things that are happening in some of these parts of the country in the north, in my opinion, are lacking in some of these things. And therefore, you have so many things, so many grudges. At the end of the day, if they are not addressed, some people will take arms against their fellow Nigerians and start killing people, maiming people, taking them for ransom and all sorts of things. Another key thing is drugs. The issue of drugs must be addressed very, very well. Because most of these things are being done under the influence of drugs. And in most cases, you find now, people are not fighting drugs. When I was in Kano, we handled the issue of drugs very effectively. We formed committees, some under NDLI, some under NAVDAG, who's all the relevant stakeholders and they were going from one point to the other to ensure that anybody taking drugs is being picked. And out of the 26 institutes that we built in four years, one of them was reformatory in rural government. So anybody called taking drugs will be taken to reformatory for three months, with psychologists, with clargies or imams and everybody with a family. At the end of the day, we'll take them back to normal. And then all of them without exception were either given work with the government or they were given capital to go and start their businesses. In fact, in that line, we take them to ITF in Kano to train them in various trades, give them capital free of charge to go and start their businesses. And most of them now working in government. In Kano, if you go, many of them in very, I don't want to mention places, but many of them were picked in motor parks, some along this and that, in dark places, and then they were revived and now they are leaders in the society. So what is critical is that government has to do its own bit. But for those who would insist in being the bad boys, now that is where the issue of security agencies would come in and take necessary action to ensure the peace of the society. Thank you.
Thank you. So quickly, another question on my kind of security.
I'm happy, not only that you were governor, you were equally a member of the senate. And I'm sure a lot of Nigerians believe that security vote is not in our constitution. So my question is, most of us think that it's unaccountable and has been linked to corruption. So and however, most states that get this money are using it to either fund or back up the state police commands in their state as well as fund their own state vigilante services. So my question to you is, if you become the president, what's your view about the security vote? Will you remove it or will you make sure that it become a constitutional item? That's one. Second question, will you as a president support the establishment of a second tier police in the country, considering the escalating number of violent incidences in the country?
Thank you so much, Mr. Owokolo.
Thank you, thank you very much. You see, for the eight years I was governor, I have never taken one Naira on the issue of security vote. Not one Naira. It's not even there. And I have inherited governments that were taking 10, 10, 10, 10, 10 million Naira in a day, seven times, 10 times. In fact, at a stage, we have a record of 12 times because the governor can only approve 10 million Naira. So they will take 10, 10 times, whatever number they want. And on addition, if the CP or the DG, the Director SSS or anybody wants to do anything, we listen to him. He should defend it. And once we are satisfied, anything above 10 million Naira, I will take it to the council. And the only thing that we did not publish for the eight years I was governor was the money given to these security agents, but we have the records. So, security vote, in our own opinion, is a big way of stealing money. Because that's why I have never done it. And if I have an opportunity again, there will never be anything like security vote in the presidency. So we have seen cases where a lot of money is being siphoned in the name of a security vote and nobody can defend it. And in my opinion, I think that should be stopped, using whatever means, because it's only a good way of taking cash from the treasury. Now, the issue of second tier police, now, if you check our blueprint, you find that we're open restructuring, very much open, including state police. I think that's the one you are talking about and so on and so forth. They were a part of our own understanding of restructuring. Now, while we believe that we will listen to the people, we will do the right thing. But at the same time, we will follow due process. This is not something that president will sit in his bedroom and announce the change of constitution to inside the issue of that affects the relevant clauses in the constitution. So we are ready to follow due process as long as Nigerians are interested in that. But on the other hand, we believe most of these things coming up are as a result of government failure. Once everything is going well, all these things will die down. If everybody will come and do his normal businesses without any harassment from anybody, if everybody can go to school, everybody can have something to eat, everybody has hope for tomorrow, I don't think anybody will start talking of this system is not working. Now, if there is failure, the implication is that people will not, nobody will want to own it. And then people start going around and see, okay, what is the fault? Oh, it's the fault of Nigerian police. Oh, it's the fault of Nigerian army, restructuring. Oh, we are poor in social players, we want restructuring. So we are open for restructuring, including the state police and any other thing that somebody or some people believe that it is necessary for the progress of this country. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Undu Owokolo. I wish we could say more on the issue of security because it's very important. And I think in our nation's history at the moment, there is a very strong need to fix security. You were talking about community participation and reorientation committees in your manifesto, but we will not have time to go into that. Let's go to the economy. And I already have a leader of the National Association of Nigerian Traders, Ms. Ijoma Anoforo. She is a leader of the National Association of Nigerian Traders. Hi.
Good evening.
Please go ahead with the question.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Senator Kwan Kunsou. I would like to ask, if you're elected president, what would you do about the incessant budget padding and poor implementation of the budget? And then what will you do about the bloated structure of the civil service? It's inefficiency that has almost drowned the economy. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, madam. Now, you see, the CPRC you mentioned, I will come in, madam, just one or two minutes. You see, it's very critical. In our manifesto or blueprint that we have here, we mentioned the issue of community participation and reorientation committees. And these committees are going to be in all the 8,809 words that we have in this country. The idea of those words, of those committees, came from Kano. In Kano, for the eight years I was governor, we have these committees in all the local governments. Now, what we did with the committee was to fund the committee to make sure that basic things in their communities are being done. That is in addition to what the state, federal and of course, the local governments were going to do. So at the end of the day, we had so many benefits. Those CP, they call them CRC in Kano, they were the people who are feeding our own primary schools. They would give them money, they go to the primary, they go to market, buy food items, cook for all the primary schools in their locality. They were the very committee that we used to give two sets of uniform every year to our children in primary school. They were the very committee that we use for security, everything, any information that is important, they bring it up to the government and so on and so forth. Of course, we encourage everybody to go back to his word in Kano and help his community. Because we realize most people have left their villages and towns, they don't want to even hear the name, maybe their parents are there, maybe they are not there. Now, we want to do it at national level. And they are going to handle some of the issues, including selection of those who are to be in the security agencies, of course, including the military. We will use them effectively for many, many things. But what is more important is that we will fund them directly from the federal. It's optional for the state or optional for the local government to give them from their own money. But through legislation, we are going to fund those committees. Now, madam, the issue of padding. You see, if you are president or you are a governor and you keep your eyes away like this, anything is likely going to happen. Even the honest ones will start wondering whether they should help themselves. In Kano, we do budgets at the end of the year and start our budget in January. Every July, June, July, we come again and sit down and review our budget. And we have never sat down in Kano to do budget. We take everybody from director level upwards up to the governor. We go to either Kaduna or Abuja. We sit down with these people. Everybody will stand up. Chief executive will stand up and say, I am going to do so, so and so, so. For example, Minister of Works, they will tell us the roads that we completed 100% last year, that one closed. Now, which ones are we starting this year? They will tell us, how can we finish them this? They will tell us, how can we finish them this year? Yes, put hundred percent. We can't finish fifty percent, put fifty percent. And how many have we started last year and they need completion? How much do we need to do that? They will tell us. And if you stand up in that meeting, just like this one, if you talk anything, that will make you as a foolish man, everybody will be laughing at you. So that was why when we started, our budget, current recurrent expenditure was seventy percent. Capital expenditure was thirty percent. Before we left Kano, we swapped it. Capital expenditure in Kano, seventy percent. Recurrent expenditure, thirty percent. And our percentage performance was about seventy, I mean a hundred percent, just over eighty percent. That's passing. Even that one, we had some issues in the state assembly. After finishing everything, when we talk to them, they will add. But our policy was, okay, when I finish our own, we will do your own. And we have never finished our own one hundred percent. So you see, we never had any issue with budget. And that budget thing is key. I have gone through the budgets of this country today. And I have gone through the budget as a senator. I have been gone through the budget as member of the House of Lords and so on. I believe that with due diligence, with what we have done in Kano, if you apply it here, you don't need more than fifty percent of the amount of money that I have seen here. Because people are just helping themselves, that's the fact of the matter. And nobody is doing anything. We have not seen anybody either in the National Assembly or in any ministry or department or agency being punished for anything. So it's like free for all. People are happy, even the ones who are sitting on the affairs, whether to be corrupt or not to be corrupt. They will be corrupt, they will come to this way because everybody is taking. And let me tell you, the civil servants, you mentioned the issue of civil servants. Civil servants are generally good. But that's where they stop. If you come with an agenda to steal, they will show you from A to Z how to steal money. I have been a civil servant myself for seventeen years. If you come, and we have seen the civil servants in Kano. I have seen them in the Ministry of Defense, even in the police affairs when I was supervising the ministry. So it depends on the leadership. They don't want punishment. No civil servant will want query. They never want query. They can't sleep with query. So the issue of padding, either in the National Assembly, I mean in the National Assembly, is when there is no due diligence. We have seen situations where people are given percentage of the total money revenue that government is getting. And they don't even know what to do, is it, they are too liquid and so on and so on. These are things that you have to look. You give ministry, department or agency just what they need, not what they can, they need and what they can take. Thank you.
We still have some more economic questions. Let me allow us to listen to Mr. Dr. Muda Yusuf, a former head at, director at the SCCI. He has his question. Let's listen to him.
Your Excellency, the current financial position of the federal government is a major cause for concern. At the last budget presentation, as for budget twenty twenty-three, projected deficit, fiscal deficit was over ten trillion naira. The debt position is also not better. Current debt level is about forty-two trillion naira. Now, if you win this election, how are you going to manage the finances?
Is concerned.
To be able to deliver your programs without incurring more debt and ensuring that we have a reduction in fiscal deficit. Or the situation currently is extremely fragile as far as the fiscal situation of the country is concerned.
I'll give you a moment, breathe out, we take a break. And when we come back, there are so much more questions on the economy. This is another very important aspect of our lives. And we need to get commitment from those who are running for office, whether they have the capacity to fix the economic problems of this country. We take a break, everyone. We hearing from Catu Breeders Association of Nigeria, Manufacturers Association of Nigeria. These are people, major player and key players in the economy of this country. And they'll be asking this question, what are the solution to our economic challenges in this country? Stay with me, everyone. The People's Starhawk continues right after this break. Thank you so much, everyone. And thank you so much, the audience members. And of course, our audience on Zoom that are watching live and participating in this event. Of course, those of you who are responding via social media. Thank you so much indeed, everyone. It's indeed a hybrid engagement across board. Thank you so much. Let's get back to the conversation, the question from Dr. Muda Yusuf on the issue of budget and how you hope to fund it without incurring more debt.
You see, in Kano, we never had an issue of unbalanced budget. Because we keep our eyes on whatever is coming and we look at what was necessary or important to be done that, that year. I am not one of those who are in a hurry to borrow money to do anything. You borrow money when it is extremely necessary and to do things that can generate resources and pay that debt. But we are so lucky in Kano, and that has always been my belief, that there is so much money in this country. Anybody who says there is no money, either he doesn't know or he wants to be mischievous. But there is enough money to do, to take care of each and every one of us in this country. We have done it in Kano in nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and three. We met a lot of debt, we paid the debt. After eight years, when I lost election, when I went back, I met debt of hundreds of millions of US dollars. We settled them before I left in two thousand and fifteen. I'm not, I'm talking of borrowing money either from bank or from individuals and so on. So we have never borrowed. So I believe that that can be replicated to a very large extent at national level. What is, I will not say I will not borrow, but if there are important things that can pay themselves, not to borrow and pay salary, handle recurrent expenditure and so on. I believe there is even more than enough money in this country to handle that. But if there are areas that are necessary, but what I'm telling you is that we have never borrowed for the eight years I was governor in Kano from any bank or any other person. And I believe.
You will be inheriting in two thousand and twenty-three. Yeah, a very huge debt burden.
As we are being told now, is that whatever we are getting as our, as our resources, as our money in this country is not even enough to service the debt. I think that's what we have heard. Now, the issue is, any responsible government, day one, will sit down with all the people, creditors, and see how they can be reshuffled. There has to be negotiation. You cannot be collecting all your resources and paying interest to the creditors. There has to be arrangement to make sure that you are given a spacing, breathing space so that you can start bringing in the good things that are necessary for the country to move forward. And let me say that the amount of money this country is losing, ranging from the oil money itself, because we are told that our allocation of two point two million barrels a day has now gone down to less than one million. That shouldn't be acceptable to any government. Under normal circumstance, government must take over every square meter in this, in this, in this country. So I believe that there are a lot of resources, enough resources to take care of ourselves. And that is exactly where we are going or what we are going to do when we have the opportunity. But where we have to talk to creditors and so on from the beginning, certainly we will do that so that we can make progress. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We can make progress. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think it's time for us to listen to.
He wants to say something.
All right, Bishop, go ahead.
You know, I'm a supportive striker, so when it goes to economy, it affects every facet. We must look at increase in production. Once your production or productivity is impaired, it will affect to leading to waste of time, resources and energy. The government must be able to cope and fight corruption headlong.
My name is Petunio, I'm an actor and a social activist. My question.
That's one of the ways to generating and making better the economy. We should look out for the output of goods and services. Cobble capital flight whereby is a process where Nigerians siphon our hard earned money abroad. And they engage in deploying the services of our monies abroad. Now, leadership must be found to be absolutely transparent. There must be transparency, property and accountability. It's a lifestyle. If a leader is corrupt, it goes down the drain. Nobody is afraid to be corrupt because you have nothing to show or nothing to say. Most of the times, you say what you want to say, but you do something differently. Your body language is enough to help people to dive in corruption.
Cutting costs of governance?
We'll be cutting costs of governance. We'll make sure governance is not lucrative. Right now, people do all they want to do to be in governance because of, what we're going to do is to cut excesses, cobble contract inflation, engage in youth empowerment and engage in services that will ensure that oil taffed will become a thing of the past. Siphoning of government money will become a thing of the past because we're going to deploy what we call digital economy. We have this poverty that cuts across. Now, we are going to ensure that people are involved in what we call skill acquisition. That way, we retain our money here. We are going to ensure that there is a common system that check meets. And every person is liable to ensuring that before he gets into governance, proper documentation of who you are now and then who you will be after governance will be brought to book. Now, you see, Nigeria will move faster and forward if we don't mind who takes the credit. We're going to deploy brains, brilliant Nigerians, within and outside, that's in the diaspora, who are going to formulate policies and implement policies that will create an environment for people to really dare to want to invest in this country.
Let me allow Mr. Kaya De Alunga, he's a representative of the Manufacturers Association of Nigeria. Let's listen to the question from the Manufacturers Association. Mr. Alunga, thank you, Bishop.
Your Excellencies, currently as it stands, the manufacturing sector contributes less than ten percent to the GDP. And of course, capacity utilization is also averaging below fifty percent. Now, there are a number of factors that are responsible for this. Infrastructural deficits, whether it's rail, road congestion, other parts. We have electricity supply shortage and countless number of factors that are responsible for the situation as it stands right now. We also have Nigeria being a signatory to the African Continental Free Trade Agreement. As it stands right now, there are over forty-three parties and eighteen signatories, which makes this body the second largest world trade body that has free trade area. As it stands, countries like Egypt, Morocco, Kenya, South Africa seems to be well prepared ahead of Nigeria. Even though we have the largest population, of course, by infrastructure, largest market. But unfortunately, it appears that we are not prepared for what is coming. In the event that your party forms the next government, what are the quick policy decision that your government will put in place to protect the manufacturing sector and strengthen it in order to make it more competitive on the continental scene? And of course, enable it to contribute more to the GDP?
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you very much. I believe that all of us are aware of what is happening. Some are even going to the extent of saying that today we are importing toothpick. I believe that things must change if we have to make progress. Of course, there are critical factors that can easily support and help manufacturers in this country or anywhere, any country in this world. One, we are talking of the issue of power. Today, we have seen the power that is being generated, the power that is being transmitted, it's a lot of losses. And at the end of the day, we have very little that goes out there. And even the cost itself must be competitive. We have other infrastructure like the roads, the railway, you mentioned, the issue of water supply and so on and so forth. They are not there. Even the issue of security. To transport goods and services from one point to the other is lacking everywhere in this country. Even the issue of taxation, government must look at the issue of taxation very critically. The figure, I think, is about thirty-three percent. Now, I think in our blueprint, we are talking of twenty-five percent. It may look like reduction, but we are afraid that because of the very high taxation, one, people are running away from this country. Two, some people are avoiding to pay taxes. And therefore, government, at the end of the day, is losing the businesses and therefore getting less tax to the government. So there are many areas that we looked at and to ensure that things are done correctly. The issue of corruption that was being mentioned earlier on is very key. And unless the issue of corruption is tackled head on, we'll continue to have problems, not only in the area of manufacturing, but in all other areas. The ease of doing business is another area that government must make sure that it's not too difficult for anybody to set up a business locally or to come from elsewhere to bring in investment. So there are many things, many factors that must be tackled by the government to ensure that people are encouraged locally to set up their businesses. Of course, education on its own is very critical. You need to educate your people to face the challenges of today and that of the future. If you don't have educated people or trained people in particular areas, people like me, who have been trained in the technical school and polytechnics, people who would come and make sure that things are done here. We have the young men and women. We have people who have gone all over the world to be educated in all the areas. What they lack is the opportunity to practice, to do the right thing. We have our classmates all over the world who were doing very well when I was in the civil service. But when you come, you'll only be lucky to even get a job now, talk less or practice what you have learned over the years. We have to get away of ensuring that people from elsewhere are coming in to invest in this country. But I know you would, my vice will want to add.
Let me allow Bishop, because we're bringing entertainment practitioners into, into, into the conversation. And perhaps maybe you have some answers to them. Because if you look at what Nollywood is doing and the music. and the music industry is doing in the economy of the country is very great. Let me allow you to listen to the question from Kate Enshaw, one of the brightest Nigerian screen stars, Kate Enshaw. Let's listen to, and that of Charles Inojie is another Nollywood actor. Let's listen to their questions.
Good day, everyone. My name is Keith Henchel.
My name is Charles Inojie. I am in the creative industry. Your quest to be president of Nigeria has seen you leave the PDP.
My name is Keith Henchel, I'm an actor and a social activist.
Where you are.
My question to some of the members.
And later return to eat.
For the average Nigerian, a household that can, you know, that it's worth its salt will have to get an inveter, solar generator while still depending on the non-existent or the lack of stable electricity. Profits of businesses are going up in smoke because I don't think any business worth its salt operates without having to run a generator 24 hours. And then, of course, this goes down to the customers and the amount of money they are paying. So will you be able to solve this electricity conundrum? And why Nigerians have not been able to access that despite decades of independence? Thank you.
She is from Nollywood.
Yeah, she is Nollywood. So here is Charles Inojie.
Charles in the industry. Your quest to be president of Nigeria has seen you leave the PDP, a party where you are a founding member and later return to eat. A move that many interpret as desperation. Now, it is the backdrop of your much-vaunted love for country. One cannot but wonder why you have not been able to raise some formidable individual that is capable to take up the responsibility of leading this country at a time such as we have that an energetic youthful leader is required, seeing that age is no longer on your side. So we are wondering, is it that you just want to answer precedent? This is a question that many Nigerians are asking. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Those are very critical questions from the Nigerian Nollywood actors there.
Thank you very much. Each and every Nigerian is concerned about the issue of electricity and energy. If you look at our blueprint, we are very detailed on how to handle the issue of electricity in this country. We have noted and therefore divided or brought in some sections to produce electricity in zones. We are not going to concentrate only on one or two sources of generating electricity in this country. We have a lot of sunshine in the northern part of the country. We have many dams, including Mambila Dam that should be started and completed within the shortest possible time. And I am happy to say that probably I'm the only governor who initiated and started electricity generation from Tiga and Charla Gorge Dams in Kano State. We have almost completed. When we are going, we left forty-three million US dollars in that account for transmission and distribution of that electricity in Kano. We are very, this is just to show you that we are very conscious of the importance of the energy. We have many dams. In fact, we have twenty-three dams in Kano. And our long-term plan is to make sure that each and every dam in Kano was being utilized for electricity generation and irrigation, water supply and so on and so forth. And we are on that when we left, praying that subsequent governments, when they come, they would continue and make sure that Kano State is self-sufficient in electricity. We have a plan, at least for Kano, on how we could use refuse. Refuge is a very source of energy now and we have a lot of it in Kano. And therefore, places where they have such facilities can easily utilize that for electricity. We have places with wind in many parts of this country. We have areas that we have coal. We have areas that we have gas and so on and so forth. So I believe that all hands must be on deck to make sure that we have multiple sources of electricity for this country. So it's something that actually bothers many of us. And we need to even look at the law itself whereby people, companies, individuals can generate electricity and sell it to the relevant organizations so that we can have as much as possible as we have seen many countries are doing in this world. Now, the issue of PDP. Well, I don't know how much time I have. Sorry, I think I need to manage this one. Let me just put it, just leave it like that. Thank you. I don't know how much time I have to tell him the story, but if I can be very brief. I want to say that, yes, I was in PDP. But when we were forming PDP in nineteen ninety-eight, we were just trying to kick out the military. When we kicked out the military, we realized that we had issues among ourselves. When we were talking of supporting the masses as governors and even as president, at that time, we had issues with people because some serious ideological differences. For that reason, over some years, in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, we had to go to APC and the gentleman, that's Charles, didn't even mention the APC. I was in APC believing that we are going to have a progressive party that will solve the problems of this country as we are enumerating here in this hall. Unfortunately, we realized that we are a wrong place again. And along the line, we had to make sure that we get a party, a party that will bring people who believe in our ideology right from the national, state, local governments and even at what level. And that is exactly what is happening. Now, we have people that we believe they are our own. And to the extent that people who are doing the wrong things, on the other hand, will find it extremely difficult to be here. Now, on the issue of age, I wish you are here physically and I will make a show on our free and see if you like me and you to go from here to Maitama or somewhere to see who is more fit between me and you or even the younger ones. Now, let me tell you, I am not in a hurry to become president. Otherwise, in two thousand and seven, when I was Minister of Defence, when I was advisor to President on Dafura in Somalia, when I was Deputy Speaker of the House of Rebs, when I was Governor of Kano four years, when I was, so on and so forth. I never thought of becoming president. I said I had unfinished job in Kano. I had to go back to Kano and contest election and went back, finish my four years and then move on. Because at that time, there was nothing. Now, I'm still strong. In fact, much stronger than my friends, my colleagues, who I believe are tired. I don't know whether he was referring to me or the other people. So I wish you are, Charles, I hope to see you when Sharon invite us again. And when you are close to me, you should know that I'm the right person to do this job. If I had this job in two thousand and seven, for example, when many of my colleagues, nineteen ninety-nine governors, two thousand and seven were contesting, even when I had more experience in various areas than them, they were contesting to become president. I was not in a hurry to be president. But I believe this is the time. And this is the time, by the grace of God, if I am able to do it now, I have all the experiences. It's just like Kano. All our achievements people are mentioning are only for second term. What we have done in first term, nobody is talking about it. This over three thousand fourteen countries all over the world, the universities, the scholarships, everything, people are just talking about second term. If not because I had eight years when I left government, if I have continued from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and seven, I wouldn't have done what I did in Kano. Now, if I was president in two thousand and seven, I am very much sure that I wouldn't have done what I will do today. Because I have seen almost, I have seen it almost all to the extent that I'm just yelling to get the job and things will go the way it should go.
I will take, all right, just a minute, yeah.
Manufacturing, you see, will encourage Nigerians to consume what we produce and produce what we consume. Then we encourage for us to patronize made-in-Nigerian goods. And with that, it will better our economy. Concerning my principal, my mentor, a man of political sagacity, this man has all that it takes to take Nigeria to the promised land. Voting for him is voting for our future, our children and our great-grandchildren. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I'd like to take just very, I will give you a very difficult task. Because we have education, we have health, we have questions of inclusion and we don't have too much time. When you become president, if you become president, if you become president, you may not have a lot of time. So I'll give you a very quick test. Within the few minutes that we have, whether or not you can quickly tackle some of these questions that are coming. We have a member of the Cattle Breeders Association and we also have Celestin Okudili, one of our partners from Action Aid. Quickly, let me get your question, Mr. Yaya Isa, who is a member of the Cattle Breeders Association.
Thank you very much, Your Excellency. Distinguished Senator Musa Kunkoso, alias Kunkosia. I want to go straight to the point. I am representing the Cattle Breeders Association of Nigeria, who of course speak on a very important sectors of this economy. That is the livestock. Livestock is combined in the agriculture department. At this point of time, we are strongly of the opinion for the benefit of all, the fact that agriculture is the sole source of our economy, that we rely on it today, tomorrow and next tomorrow. And for us to pay much attentions and give it the best so that we can produce what we export, we produce domestically, we are of the opinion that that ministry could be divided into two. So that at the end of the day, we are taking of having a ministry of livestock and fisheries.
Question.
Yes.
This is a question we want them to provide.
It's a question I'm coming, it's a question, yeah, I'm coming now. The question is that we are of the opinions that any government that comes on board should think of creating ministry of livestock and fisheries as it implies in our sister state within the African subregions and beyond. What will it be you are taking in this regard?
All right, just, we can only take one more. Let's ask Celestin one question, Celestin, in the area of economy. Please show.
Okay, thank you very much, good evening, everyone. So my question is simple. Today in Nigeria, a loaf of bread is about eight hundred to thousand, whether you know we are buying it. And these are attributable to growing inflation, which is about twenty-three percent now. Unemployment is also at thirty-three point three percent. So on concrete terms, if we assume office, God willing, next year, how are you going to address this, giving us yearly milestones? Thank you.
Thank you. If you can quickly tackle those questions in two minutes, please.
Last job opportunities.
That's, yeah, from the cattle breeders and from Celestin.
Thank you very much. Now, Ministry of Dividing the Ministry into two, Ministry of Agriculture. Now, I think I shouldn't be in a hurry to make comment on this. Because what we have today in the treasury is very frightening. And these are things that really require a lot of study. Because as the vice presidential candidate mentioned, that we have to do everything under the sun to save money in terms of running government. We cannot afford to waste too much resources under our circumstance now in terms of creating ministries. In fact, we believe that there are some even agencies that, I mean, government should look at very, very critically. But on the other hand, we are very conversant with issues that affect the livestock industry in this country. We have many issues. So many people came to me as governor. Even now, people are coming on the issue of multiple taxation. Somebody buying a kettle from Maiduguri, before you take it to Lagos or you take it to any part of the south, it takes a lot of money, you spend a lot of money. People exploiting these businessmen on the road and so on and so forth. So I think there are many areas, if you look at our blueprint, where we encourage cattle breeders and of course, all other people who are handling the issue of livestock. Now, the issue of jobs, I think that's the last one.
A loaf of bread, the price has gone so much up. And that is perhaps one of the food that most Nigerians eat. What would you do? Inflation, basically?
Yes. You see, there are many things that can be done. It's just one, it's not one, it's not two, it's not three things. It's a combination of many things that we will do. Ranging from the issue of corruption today, where people are taking or getting easy money, they go and buy dollar at whatever price. It's like they are happy to buy it at any price. Now, the issue of job opportunities. Now, no matter how little the price is, if you don't have that money, it becomes more difficult for you. Our plan is to create as many jobs as possible. Our plan is to ensure that activities are created for every young man and woman. Those who are going to schools, we go to schools. Those who are ready and trained to do certain jobs, they will continue to do it. We establish technical schools, vocational schools and so on and so forth, like we did in Kano. We created, in this my second term, four cities in Kano State. And to build four cities, it requires a lot of things. So many young men and women and businessmen who have been engaged in ensuring that people have got something to do. So the issue of job creation is, we'll handle it in multiple ways to ensure that all the young men and women, those who are willing to work, of course, we give them opportunity to work.
All right, there is a critical part of this conversation. You may sit if you will going forward. The president of ASU is in the room, so we're going into education, health and issues of inclusion. These are very critical part of this engagement today. Ben Ugoke is a lecturer and a member of ASU. Hi, Ben. Is it about ASU strike and how to permanently solve it or about the education system in Nigeria?
It's about the education system. Your Excellency. We're wondering, considering the incessant face-offs between the federal government of Nigeria and tertiary institutions based junior silver poor funding, what percentage of the annual budget will your government allocate to education if elected president? And what are your plans for education, especially the university education system?
Now, thank you very much. You see, for those who have in budget and governance generally, we don't, we are not in a hurry to mention percentage. But all what we can say is that our government, by the grace of God, will finance our will finance our primary uh responsibilities. And of course, one of them is the issue of education. Now, I don't know the position you are holding in ASU, but ordinarily, those who are in the field of education in this country, ordinarily, they should start by acknowledging my achievements in Kalu. We have done so much to the extent that even the branch, Kan ASU branch in Kalu, we are not going to uh strikes when it was called at the national level. Because all what they had wanted were being properly addressed by our government. Now, another thing is that um the our program, the blueprint that we have, has properly addressed all the concerns of ASU. We have made it very clear in our blueprint that we will not be in a hurry to create additional institutions or tertiary institutions. What we will start with day one is to ensure the improvement, the expansion of all the tertiary institutions that we have in this country. Including the equipments necessary, including the quality teachers that we have across the country and even our brothers and sisters that are in diaspora. So we have a comprehensive arrangement in our manifesto to make sure that ASU in particular, their concerns are properly addressed. And that was exactly what we did uh in Kalu. And I am happy to say that most of the uh young men and women of Kalu residents that we sent abroad between two thousand and and eleven to two thousand and fifteen, over three thousand of them are all back. Many of them are in Nigerian universities, some are there outside the country and so on and so forth. In fact, some are already leaders in ASU itself. So um, we established two universities. Uh, they are one of the best universities that we have today in this country and so on and so forth. So ours, we see education as number one on our agenda.
Yeah, we got a lot of ground to cover. There is a young girl, which we have a recorded question from her. And she's very concerned about what is happening on the street of Nigeria each time she is going to school. She is Chimamanda Asuike. Let's listen to her. She says she's bothered about um some of the out of school children. Each time she's going to school, she sees them on the street and there will be. Uh, the question is, what would you do? Let's listen to Chimamanda Asuike.
My name is Chimamanda Azwike and I'm in year five. Every morning on my way to school, I see many children my age and those younger than me chasing vehicles begging for money. As president, what would you do to reduce or completely eliminate out of school children in Nigeria so they can become valuable contributors to our society?
Thank you. Thank you. I think uh, I will give you a copy of my, of the blueprint to send to her. Because you see, we have clearly addressed the issue of out of school children. In fact, there are about twenty million. And we made it clear that we are going to build five hundred thousand classrooms across the country. Meaning that every child in this country should go to school. And let me also tell, I mean, tell her that when I was governor in Kalu, there was no such thing, no child in Kalu. Kalu, when I say Kalu, I mean residents. We don't say uh uh um indigenous. We provided adequate classrooms, adequate teachers, adequate teaching and learning materials, everything. There was no almarjiri. In fact, it's a law during at our time and it's still there. That nobody should send his child to the sort of almarjiri that she's talking about. Every child must go to school. So it's not something for her new to me. That and it's very easy if we could do it in Kalu. Kalu is a good fraction of Nigeria. If we could do it with our resources, without resorting to borrow anything and education during our time was free, primary, secondary and tertiary level. And even those who are going to universities all over the world, over three thousand of them. Not only the two universities that we established. We also selected uh uh private universities, I told you the other time. We had, we sent two hundred, four hundred and twelve to Al Kalam University, private university. We had sent three hundred to uh 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 Egnidion, three hundred to Bels University, two hundred to Crescent University. Because of the cost of APTI, we sent only twenty five in in to Maituguri.
Let me, because there is the Nans Piaro here, uh, who is uh uh, Mr. Giwate Mitakwa, still on the issue of the education, which I'd like you to, uh, Mitakwa, hi. Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Your Excellency, there's no doubt that during your time as the governor of Kalu State, you did very well, excellently well in the education sector of the states. So our fathers and mothers know that education is the bedrock of any nation. And education is a right, not a privilege. As you can see, right now during the INEC, I am um evaluation of the register and voters, I'm registered voters. We have forty percent of students, not youth alone, students that register this year. And so you can know that we students are ready to vote in our next president. And we are very, very very serious about this. We want to know the presidents, we want to know the next president that we are voting for. That's one. Two is that, that's our own, on our own platform. But right now, we are evaluating all the presidents just I am asking at the moment. Sir, um, the ASU rep asked you a question earlier on about the percentage of the, of the education sector. How do you want to do your own when you get there, twenty, after the twenty twenty election, after winning the election? That was the percentage. We all know that UNESCO benchmark is twenty six percent of budget allocation. Sir, right now, during the past, I am last month, we are on the streets because we are outside, we are outside our campuses for good eight months. And there's no proper education, there's no proper funding on education. We are not happy about that. Sir, are you telling us, sorry, sir, are you telling us that you two will get there and just do what you want, any, any, you want, the way you like it? We want to know now the percentage you are going to give us when you get there to the office. And two is that, sir, please, sir, please, it's very important, education, see, education is very important, sir.
I'm giving you a very good opportunity because we have a lot of things to cover. Thank you, Mitakwa, please. Alright, can we, can you deal with that?
Asking the same question. You see, from my own experience in government, it is wrong for anybody to come out and say, I'm giving you so so percentage, you don't even know the money. So you cannot talk of this percentage. But what I can assure you is that we are going to have enough resources to fund education in this country. Not only we will do our own, we will work together with the state governments and local governments to make sure that each and every child in this country has given the opportunity to go to school. Those who have finished primary school should have a position or opportunity to go to secondary and then from secondary to the tertiary. And that's exactly what we did. In my last two years in Kalu, we were even looking for Kalu, not indigenous, residents of Kalu to go to university and polytechnics and other tertiary institutions. We couldn't get enough because all of them were mobilized into other institutions, including universities that we selected. We selected Al Kalam University, private university. We selected Maituguri University, we selected Amadibella University and Maituguri University. These four universities, we built three hundred bed hostel free of charge just to encourage them to admit our people, our, our children. So you see, the issue of education, be at home, we know what we are talking about. We have the necessary experience to handle the issue of education. I think other sectors should be, uh, should, as one that should be asking me questions, not uh area of education.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, I think we need to, uh, we, we, just quickly once, sir. Now, we would like to allow that in our blueprint, it makes it so explicitly simple for them to be involved into tertiary education because.
NACO, GCE, JAM would be free. And again, the matrix examination results for JAM has a lifespan of four years. Thank you so much.
Let's get some comment quickly on the issue of health. Um, the president of the Nigerian Medical Association, Dr. Uche Ojema is on standby. Hi, Doc.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Your Excellency, I pray you do not take health to the backbone like it's been done here today. When the opportunity we want second to discuss it. But to progress, uh, everything else we have been discussing depends on good health and good education. So let's understand that this is very important and should be taken first. Now, you are, you must have been following the discourse about the progressive loss of human resource for health, which is commonly called brain drain and the indices index effect on our health indices. I'm sure you also aware that our president returned today after sixteen days away on medical tourism. Your Excellency, if you become the president of Nigeria, what will you do? Not just to stop the brain drain, but reverse it to brain gain. And then what would be your plan for medical tourism? Will you also go? Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Doc, I appreciate it.
Hey, um, thank you very much. You see, the failure that we have today, the one we are saying we are going to correct, affects all sectors, including the health. And I'm happy to say that our package starts right from education, like we have done in Kalu. In Kalu State, we built institutions, five institutions in four years under Minister of Health. Two nursing schools, two uh medical free and health technology plus um um medical college. And we sent hundreds of young men and women abroad in addition to the scholarships in all the institutions that we could get scholar, I mean, admission in this country. We encourage girl child education. And even at that level of medicine, in fact, there are one set out of over this three thousand, three hundred ladies, I mean, out of three hundred people we sent to do medicine in one go. Only forty five were men. All the remaining were female that we sent abroad to go and uh study uh medicine. Now, we improved all our general hospitals in Kalu. In fact, I visited America. We have some institutions that we are giving free uh equipments and and so on to African countries, especially Nigeria. All what we are paying was just the issue of transportation. So we brought as many, we equipped our hospitals, uh, and of course our schools and so on in all the areas. So a lot has been done in the area of education. And I believe there is a lot that can be done, uh, again, especially in this country. Now, what we are trying to do now is comprehensive, including the area of health. And I want to assure you that not only me, even you, after a little time in government, you will be very happy to stay in Nigeria in our hospitals. Because we'll do everything it takes, ranging from manpower to all the necessary equipments to encouraging people in private uh uh universities to make sure.
Abroad for medical treatment, if you.
I will do everything under the sun, not to go to anywhere for any medication. Now, look, I will tell you, I will tell you. See, many people don't understand. We have been to these hospitals, taking our friends, escorting them, going to these medical students, seeing what they were doing. We have seen all the equipments. I have not seen one equipment that Nigeria cannot purchase, one I couldn't see. So they are not even too much different from what we have in our hospitals. All what we require, of course, to me, is even unwise if I am president or in position not to go abroad, to go there. Because you can bring everybody, professionals are everywhere, just like our own are going out. You can as well bring other people to come into Nigeria and take care of you in your bedroom or in clinic or anywhere. You don't have to go there. And let me, let me say that we tried as much as possible. Even this school, there are some bottlenecks in, in your sector, in your area that we have noted. Many of our students that came, they had to go for examination, which is okay. But they were trained in these countries that our leaders are in hurry to go. But when they come here, they have to pass that exam, which is okay, let them pass the exam. But the point is that many of them cannot get fixed in a, uh, is it housemanship? I have a daughter, she was the best some years ago in Bayrein University. She had to come and beg me to talk to chief medical director. To go, I said, but you are the best, how could I, do I have to call the chief medical, she said, you have to. I invited one of those I know, he said, it's true. You finish medicine, you cannot go to uh uh right, I will go to do and do your housemanship and so on and so forth. These are some of the bottlenecks. Even in the, in the nursing, we don't have teachers. We don't have enough teachers. What we did in Kalu, because we are in a hurry to have teachers in the Ministry of, the Ministry of Health. We had to select fifty nurses and send them to our university in Egypt and bring in some lecturers to manage our five schools. Pendant the time, these five, fifty finish and come back to manage our institutions. Now, these uh Arabs came and taught our students. And the thing went so well that the first exam, our national students were the best in the country when they had their, their exam.
Thank you so much. So we need to move to inclusion, this is another part of, and nobody in this country, just a moment, sir, uh, can be left behind. This is very important in their own nation. I have Mr. Jacki Pelle, uh, who is a leader of the, uh, the Obino Foundation. Uh, Mr. Pelle is going to see you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Your Excellency, my question is direct and sharp. You have made reference or references to your blueprint, which a friend of mine sent to me a while ago and I took time to look at your blueprint. Mister, Your Excellency, are you aware that your blueprint did not say anything about persons with disability? And would you look me in the eyes and said that you would do an addendum to include persons with disability in your blueprint? Secondly, would you look me in the eyes and the generality of Nigerians watching today and make a commitment? And I'll take it as a social contract that in your cabinet, you will have at least one minister who is a person with disability. Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Yeah, quickly, because there are women in the room also who have some grievances. And please go ahead, just a minute to answer that question.
What's his name again?
I mean, Mr. Jacki Pelle, Jack Pelle.
Yeah, I met you many times. Um, on a lighter mood, I'm beginning to wonder whether there is anybody today in this country who is not disabled. Because you find everybody, if you cannot eat, I'm not disabled. Anyway, on a more serious note, I want to say you read our, our blueprint. No, it's there.
It's not. I just read it.
Okay.
It's not.
Now, I, I will ask somebody to show you after this, where we mentioned. But the point is that, you see, we believe, especially in our. But the point is that, you see, we believe, especially in our party, the NNPP, that we are being sponsored by the masses of this country. People that you call the needy. And they covered all those areas you are talking about. The very old, the very young, people with disability and so on, people who require help. This, as politicians, that is our constituency. And you can be rest assured that are ready at any given time T to do whatever it takes to help this needy. And that is our strength. Majority of this country, people in this country require a lot of support in all these areas we are talking about, including the people living with disability. Now, if it is a contract, let us have it that by the grace of God, if we have it, you will get, let me say, at least one in the cabinet. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I have some very vibrant women in the room. I have Miss Ebera Ifendu and Miss Faith Wadishie from Pearl. Miss Ebera, oh, great. So let's show, I'll take your two questions so that you can answer them. Miss Ebera, go ahead, please.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Your excellency, good evening. I don't know if you are aware that the percentage of women in governments is abysmally low. It's about 15 states without any woman in the state assembly, including Kano State. Sir, you have spoken so well about the achievements in education, health and the rest. And I want to know, the time you were governor of Kano State, what did you do to include women? And presently, what are you going to do if you become the president of Nigeria to ensure we have an increase in women's representation? Also.
I need to take one, so I can allow Miss Faith to also ask a question. Please, go ahead.
Thank you very much, your excellency. My name is Faith Wadishie. I represent the civil society. I used to be on the board of the International EITI. My question has to do with the economy. Um, we know that we have four refineries in Nigeria with a nameplate of 445,000 barrels per day. But in recent times, these refineries have produced zero barrels per day. And we know also that the cost of oil subsidy has risen to over 900% on a monthly basis. What, sir, will you do differently in addressing the oil subsidy question? Because right now, as we speak, people are on the streets buying petrol at 500 naira a barrel, I mean, a liter. People don't go to work. People sleep at the filling stations. And yet, we are a giant oil-producing country. Thank you so much.
All right.
Okay.
Very good to ask. Those are your final questions and you have just a minute to answer.
Okay. Um, women, you see, like I said, the, our biggest constituency are youth and women, especially in areas that people know us very well. I can say in northern Nigeria today. Now, we handle the issue of women as a package based on my personal experience. When I was governor in 99, even in 2011 in Kano to 2015, we wanted to make appointment. But definitely, we need people who can handle that appointment. To the extent that we had to go to university to, thus, thus what is happening in our own part of the country. Maybe it's different, but I'm telling you the reality of what happened in Kano. We had to go to university and ask the vice chancellor or somebody to recommend something. So what we did was to educate, that's the first thing. And secondly, even encourage them to go to tertiary institutions, not only in Nigeria, even abroad. And this is the point to thank the husbands, the parents of those young men who were able to take those opportunities. Now, I can tell you, our situation has changed in Kano based on our own efforts, based on what we have done to make sure that women are carried along. But I'm happy to say, now we have many of them that are very much interested in joining the party. In fact, they are part and parcel of us. With some of them are even holding positions in the party and of course, in the campaigns.
We now have time again. We are totally out of time. But here is a charter of demands to you.
But I didn't answer, I have no problem.
Unfortunately, we don't have time to left again. There is a charter of demand here from the civil society organization, which will be presented to you and maybe you can sign up to it after this. But I must sincerely thank you and your vice presidential candidate. Thank you so much indeed. This is a first in the series. I must thank NNPP and our partners tonight for partnering with us on this very, very important occasion. Thank you so much indeed, everyone. I'll see you again next time. And we take up yet another political party with our flag, BRAs. Thank you so much, Nigerian. You know, your voice counts until that election. When you make that decision, it's bye for me. Bye-bye.